Yeah. Everyone ready? Good. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the January 14th Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Satello, can you please lead us in the plane? Okay, we have acknowledgment of certificate of posting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
First, we have a second by Supervisor Curro. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 No presentations or recognitions today for C. That would take us to D, Department Head Announcements. C I M.
Correct. There is one item that is going to be polled, that is 1.9.
Thank you. Great, that would bring us to E, Board Announcements. Oh. I wasn't informed with that, but so, yes, Dana, come on up.
Okay, oh, there we go. So, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity for the Behavioral Health Department to honor David Garcia. David Garcia has been with our department for 16 years, and he has been a substance use disorder counselor for over 20 years, and that includes working in a federal prison. And if we think about that, 20 years of service touching many lives. Substance use disorders don't just impact the individual, it impacts families, communities, and the work that David has done has touched countless lives. He is also an Army veteran and has proudly served his country. David's career includes working with youth treatment and prevention, perinatal and adult populations. In the last couple of years, he has worked with adults in drug court, and this is just an amazing program in collaboration with our courts and the probation department where individuals receive really a lot of support and wraparound services to really help change their lives, and David has been instrumental in this program. His approach of asking the clients to tell me, I don't know if I can do this right, tell me your story, eh? Has helped numerous participants go through the process of recovery while navigating the court system. David has been a mentor to his peers and his supervisor, Liz Elizabeth Lopez. As we navigate the constant change in trends of substance use while still meeting our clients and consumers where they are at, David's no-nonsense method in telling it as it is while helping others has gained the respect of the participants, providers, partners, his peers, and the community. And I had an opportunity to see David in action at the Red Ribbon Event, which we hold every year to recognize the importance of preventing substance abuse in youth. And there are many of David's clients who were just so proud of really their recovery and their journey, and David was just kind of, they just had this natural rapport and relationship, and you could just see the bond, the bond and the caring, because this work isn't just clinical, it's not just sterile, you have to lead with your heart, and David really puts it out there, and we are going to miss him tremendously. And our department won't be the same without him, but he deserves his retirement, and he will be missed, and we all wish him a very happy retirement. And I don't know if Liz or David has any additional words to say, but I'm going to step away for a moment, and if not, okay.
I'm very blessed to have this job. You know, some people come to work and look at it as a work. I came and I looked at this opportunity to make a difference, and, you know, Hollister being such a small-knit community, I see some of the efforts that myself and my coworkers who are in the audience here have produced. I see children in better homes, I see mothers and fathers reconnecting with employment and housing and doing all these little different things that set the stage for that's the next generation. And while I'd like to take credit for everything I've done here, I can't take it by myself because, you know, I've worked with extremely dedicated staff and supervisors, clinical supervisors, as well as the department itself. Some of the unseen things that the people that Behavioral Health do go unnoticed, including our office assistants, our case managers, it's a team effort. And I think I've been effective at this job because, you know what, I had an effective team to work with, and working in Hollister has really been an important step in my own process of life and finding peace in this world and meaning. So I'd like to just thank the county for giving me this job and this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service, David. Enjoy retirement. All right, that would take us to Board Announcements. So this would be the time on the agenda to briefly discuss committee updates or other community matters. We'll start with Supervisor Satello, anything?
Thank you. I attended my first R C R C meeting last week. Monterey County Supervisor Chris Lopez is now the past president, and the new Chair of R C R C is Jerry Byrne from Modock County. It was kind of just a lot of kind of updates, but kind of a lot of stuff is really kind of unknown right now, as there's kind of a transition. The legislature just came back, and so I will have much more updates in the future. But right now, it's just kind of, they were introduced, there was a big turnover on that committee, and so a lot of introducing to staff and what staff specializes in, and, you know, the kind of federal legislative update, issues on the horizon is the debt ceiling, budget, and the secure rural schools funding, Senate priorities, they're identifying as possible border priorities, and extending the Trump tax relief. And so those are kind of some of the big ones, so I look forward to bringing more of those. We had our first Juvenile Justice Commission meeting as well last night, not a lot to report there, but that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Zenger. Supervisor Velasquez.
I don't have any committee updates, I'm just starting, but I do want to thank everyone here for allowing me to do my soaring in from my hospital bed last week. For those of you that don't know what's going on, I came down with pneumonia back in early November, and I've been fighting the after effects ever since. Last week, on a doctor's visit, they decided I belonged in the emergency room and not on the streets, and so they pulled me in for the next six days. But we're recovering day by day. For those of you that have not received your shots for pneumonia, do it. Trust me on this, it's kind of hard to go from a normal person to feeling like you can't walk without an air tank with you, so please, everyone, be careful out there. And again, thank you, the board, for accommodating my soaring in through my hospital bed.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Curro.
I just want to thank you for being here, and my mother-in-law right now is dealing with double pneumonia, and my heart goes out to you. It's very difficult, so I agree. If you haven't gotten your pneumonia shot, please go get your pneumonia shot. I think I've convinced my husband, he needs to do it. With that said, I have attended the Emergency Medical Care Committee. That was last week. That is an incredible group of people, and my heart goes out to all of Southern California and our California residents with the wildfires. I think we have a unique opportunity to learn from what they've gone through. Dr. Bogie has taken over. Dr. G had nothing but incredible things to say about Supervisor Cosmicke and former Supervisor Bob Tiffany going through COVID, and I'm really excited to serve on this committee. Some of the challenges are with training, so one of the goals we're going to try and do is in between the quarterly meetings, we're going to be meeting with each of the agencies and work out kind of a plan on how we can get training more accessible so that all of our first responders. It's that unforeseen type of training that is difficult, and so we're working as a group to try and address that and hopefully bring back some ideas and options to the board for their consideration. Also, NACO has sent out a huge list of grant opportunities. I forwarded all these grant opportunities to the staff, but I want to highlight just a couple of them. The Rural Business Development Grant Program is open, and it ends very quickly. It ends on February 28th, and this is rural businesses, this is to promote economic development and job creation projects through the awarding of grants and funding to eligible entities. I'm not sure if we can even piggyback on that one, but the other one was on emergency response and resilience, and because of the fires in Southern California, and you can never be prepared enough, this is a community facilities disaster repair program and preparation program, and it is ongoing. So I did forward all this to staff, and if it's something that the grant writers in the chair would like to bring forward, I just wanted to mention it, but thank you so much, and welcome to Supervisor Velasquez to the board. Nice to see you in person.
Thank you, Supervisor. So, as mentioned at the meeting, January 6th, I postponed the traditional comments as the new chair to this meeting due to Supervisor Velasquez's situation last week when he was sworn in from the hospital. So I've been advised this would be the right time to make some brief comments as chair heading into 2025, but before I get to that, I just want to say I'm happy to have Supervisor Velasquez join us. I'm glad you're recovering, you're in my thoughts and prayers, and this really, you know, you being here and you taking part from the hospital bed just shows how dedicated you are to this community, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And then I just want to congratulate again Supervisor Velasquez for joining the board and Supervisor Dom Zenger on your reelection. So I'm not going to be overly winded here primarily in these introductory comments, I just want to make it clear how I'll approach the role as chair. Most important, I want to emphasize that, you know, I expect there to be an extremely business-like environment in these chambers. We will hold orderly, civil, efficient, productive meetings, we'll get the people's business done in a professional manner at all times, and I'll do everything possible to foster an environment where advancement of policy and transparency for the public are the utmost priorities at all times. And so on that note, you'll notice, I think you'll notice quite clearly right away today that I will be pulling back on my own personal rhetoric to focus my time and attention on running our board meetings and fostering a business-like environment. This is the traditional role of a board chair, and I think prior board chairs have done a good job of that, and I will be abiding by that tradition as well. So want to emphasize as well, the board chair needs to get equal opportunities for all supervisors to participate, for the public to participate. We want to make sure that all districts are equally represented up here and adequately represented, and I'll do everything possible to remove barriers impeding the board majority's directives as well. I will promote the utmost transparency possible for the public and make sure residents are given full access to engage in the process. I will approach agenda setting along with Vice Chair Dom Zenger in a way that ensures this board advances what I expect to be a bold agenda and that the priorities of our constituents are at the forefront of this board at all times. We will, without a shred of doubt, move key agenda items forward without unnecessary delays, and we will not tolerate attempts to slow progress. So that said, among the many future items on today's agenda, there are 10 of them, I believe, I'll be bringing forward an item for, I expect to be on the January 28th meeting, a proposal from the 2024 Governance Ad-Hoc with Supervisor Zenger and myself to amend the board rules in order to make sure we're maximizing our very limited time and resources on the county's top priorities. There will be some sacrifices when it comes to, you know, process, but I, you know, my main goal here is to make sure that we're able to make challenging decisions in order to ensure progress remains our top priority. And we will defy the stereotype that government moves slowly and politicians can't get things done, I promise you that. We will be remarkably courageous and bold in this next year, and we will be remarkably responsible with taxpayer dollars. And as our constituents expect, we will take courageous steps forward with key items like road improvements and growth. To briefly go forward here, we will no longer make excuses about what we can't do in this county. We will take on our challenges, we will solve our problems, and we will embrace our opportunities. And above all, we will represent our constituents, the everyday people who depend on us to make our community a better place, and we will never, ever pander to special interests inherently motivated to contaminate the democratic process. So that's what I have today. process. So that's what I have today. Do we have any public comment? This would be the time for residents to address the board on items of interest not appearing on the agenda but under the subject matter jurisdiction of the county. No action may be taken unless provided by government code section 54954.2. Do we have public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, we'll start with Alex Seiwak.
Good morning Supervisors. Thank you for letting me appear. This is in relation to an item that was on the agenda last week, but over the weekend I found that it was pulled. It's to do with the LAFCO and the eight acres that we filed a petition with LAFCO a year ago about annexing it. It's completely surrounded by the city. And at the LAFCO meeting, our application was complete, but the current tax sharing agreement does not allow for the tax sharing agreement to apply to an annexation by petition as opposed to an annexation by resolution, even though we have been pre-zoned five or six years ago with the city. So we're sitting there in limbo. We're eight acres. We're totally surrounded by the city. We'd be happy to develop in the county. We'd like to develop something. The application that we forwarded for a tentative map uses the density bonus law, provides very low income housing and reserves a site for a childcare facility within our eight acres. So the letter that the chairman sent dated today, or it's actually dated January 14, 2024, I assume that's a typo, but asks for a 90-day extension to get the tax sharing agreement resolved. I don't know where it stands. When we met with Mr. Espinoza and Mr. Prado a year ago, the tax sharing agreement was in effect. I don't know where it stands now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Valerie Eglin. You've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Well, welcome new members of the board supervisors. And thank you Supervisor Velasquez for emphasizing the need for vaccines. I get mine.
All the time. Whatever my doctor says, I do it. And it is so, so important to put that message out to the community. But I do hope that you recover very quickly. What I wanted to really emphasize is that I hope that this board.
Moves this year forward, investing in our county quality of life with our parks. And of course, there's no board meeting that I can't mention the importance of parks, paths, trails and trees. According to Narpa percentages, you can raise the health of a community by 20% in the general population just by providing tree shaded paths, streets and groomed parks. So it's very important how much we spend on health and human services. What can we reduce in that area by investing in our parks? It is very important. And with the federal government wanting nonprofits to partner because they are community-based organizations and they bring the voice of the people as close as possible with the least expense, I hope that the EPA grant comes up for our regional park and to provide us with a really superior park, an open space that's not behind a fence. And that's a difficulty in San Benito County. We've got a lot of open space to look at, but it's all behind a fence. So thank you very much. Good luck in this year and I look forward to the discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Stacy McGrady. You've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Good morning. Good morning Supervisors. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. You know, the fires in Southern California have been so horrific and such a reminder of the necessity for disaster preparedness. Those who know me know that I am a bit of a disaster preparedness junkie. So with that in mind, I would like to remind you of the 2223 Civil Grand Jury Report, which notes that our Hollister Fire Department is horribly understaffed and under-equipped. At the time of that writing, we had 48 staff. We should have, based on our population, 100 staff with the fire department. We also should have minimally two more fully equipped and staffed fire stations. Prior to the 2008.com, each station was staffed with four firefighters. And now, since then, it was reduced to three and that's where it's at right now. And we are horribly understaffed. Along the lines of disaster preparedness, I'd like to encourage all of our county employees to participate in Community Emergency Response Training, CERT, which is offered through our own Office of Emergency Services. I would also like to request that you consider communicating with Caltrans. The intention is to permanently close the San Juan Hollister Road intersection at Union Road. I understand there was an accident along there this morning. And with San Juan Hollister Road being closed, there's no way to circumvent traffic issues or accidents causing further issues when we're trying to leave town, especially in an emergency. Finally, on the topic of economic development, I think our economic development is like a three-legged stool. Tourism is important. Supporting our farmers and agriculture is critically important. But also, I really hope that we could adopt a more business-friendly posture, encouraging corporation, manufacturing, revenue generating businesses to develop in San Benito County. If we don't, I don't know. I was thinking last night, maybe we're going to have to file bankruptcy. Maybe we could divide up our county and Merced would take a portion, Santa Clara County could take a portion, and Hollister would go back to being part of Monterey County. These are my concerns and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And I have one other in chambers. Celeste.
Good morning, everyone. Talk about PTSD, Mr. Velasquez, COVID and vaccines, but I'm glad we can laugh about it now and I hope you do feel better. So my public comment is the Republican National Hispanic Assembly of California issues the following statement as it relates to the recent Border Patrol events in Bakersfield, California and other parts of the state. In recent days, reports have emerged that the Border Patrol and Immigration and Customs Enforcement, commonly referred to as ICE, conducted what is what some witnesses described as raids in the farming community in Bakersfield County, California. This information was shared via social media, spreading fear within the farming communities, causing some migrant workers to avoid going to work and/or keeping their children home from school. Many have used this opportunity to blame President-elect Donald Trump for the raids, ignoring the fact that President Biden remains in office and Gavin Newsom is the governor of California, where a Democrat supermajority is in place. Although at the time of this writing, Border Patrol has not issued an official statement, local news sources have obtained specific operations aimed at locating certain individuals and then requesting a Bakersfield NBC story. And I have a link I will share online. It is important to clarify that President-elect Trump has consistently advocated for meaningful change and reform to our broken system. During his first term, President Trump proposed a permanent pathway to residency for DACA residents contingent on securing funding for the border wall, a request that Democrats refuse to support. Preventing immigration reform form moving forward. In his 2024 campaign, President-elect Trump emphasized that his first priority is to deport violent criminals such as members of the Tren de Agua Venezuelan gang and other terrorist entities that have been allowed to enter our county illegally and without proper vetting by the current administration. To those using those incidents to sow fear within our communities, we urge you to stop spreading misinformation and perpetuating a victim mentality. Migrant workers have historically been hardworking, self-sufficient and grateful for the opportunities available in the United States. The RNHA California recognizes the importance of legal immigration and acknowledges the challenges that migrant farm workers face. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. That takes us to the consent agenda. So if any member of the public wants to comment on consent, please follow to speaker card, present it to the clerk. You'll have three minutes to speak. Items pulled from consent will be heard later in the meeting and each pulled item will have public comment when being discussed. Members of the public may comment on a pulled item if they have not previously commented on it. Do we have any public comment on consent?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Any supervisors wish to pull items from consent?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would request that item 1.12 be continued to February 11. The county council needs additional time for research.
Thank you for that. Does the board have any issues with that? If none, we'll continue that item. I was asked later to pull an item just for further questioning. So I'm going to be pulling 1.10 consent. And if the board's okay with it, just in light of staff being here, hoping we can just address that item now and then move on to regular. So 1.10 is this item regarding a transfer. It was a lot of taxpayer dollars involved with it. So I wanted to just get some further clarity from staff if we could just, the staff report itself, and this is an item that I'll be emphasizing going forward, perhaps in the board rules that come up, just maybe provide a little bit more clarity and sort of lay term because it's a little more technical. Steve, can you please explain what exactly which fund is going from where to where, why it's being done, just due to the dollar amounts that are involved in the issues here?
Of course. Yeah. Good morning Chair, Board, new board. Congrats. Steve Luth, Public Works Administrator. So when we get printouts of invoices from vendors, they have a lot of great information on an Excel spreadsheet that says where funds are being paid from for web projects, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So what our spreadsheet doesn't have is an actual connection printout to the backend of the accounting system for the county, which is called New World ERP. And so on that cover sheet, all the numbers matched as we've been designing River Parkway and San Benito Street, which is a project. A little bit of background, it's a project to install a roundabout near the high school at River Parkway and San Benito Street. And we're also going to be installing a sidewalk because all the folks that are kind of coming to the high school, there's no sidewalks along San Benito Street between like Eastview or even Union Road all the way up to the high school. So we're going to put a sidewalk there. We're going to be installing some streetlights. That's the project. So when this project was created several years ago, I guess because it had the name River Parkway, in the backend of the system, those design funds and environmental assessments were being withdrawn from the Park Impact Fund. It should have been withdrawn from Measure G, which has always been tracked as a Measure G project from the beginning. But the actual funds were being taken from the Park Impact Fund, which is for parks. And so over the last month or two, we've been doing some accounting quality control procedures and kind of some new procedures. And so we discovered that this roadway and the roundabout that should have been coming from Measure G, which has always been tracked and reported as a Measure G project, had been coming from Park Impact Funds. And so we discovered that. And so this item is to take Measure G funds that should have been used to pay for that design and assessment and essentially reimburse the Park Impact Fund that's just for parks. And so we're moving a pot of money to where it should have been from originally.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that further clarification. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? I don't either. I appreciate that. We'll do this and then we actually need to go back and approve the rest of consent. But can I get a motion to approve that item, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote.
Supervisor Cosmicke?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Supervisor Curl?
Yes.
Supervisor Velasquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. And then the rest of consent, can I please get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the rest of consent.
I'll second.
Second.
Sorry, Chair, minus item number 1.9.
I appreciate that. Yeah, the item that was pulled. Thank you, Clerk Delgado. We have a first, we have a second from Supervisor Curl. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Supervisor Cosmicke?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Supervisor Curl?
Yes.
Supervisor Velasquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. So that'll bring us to the regular agenda. And so first off, we have 2.1, which is receiving an update from Founder Works on the status of the San Benito Healthcare District. Discuss the advisory measure and the district's measure that was on the November 5 general election ballot and provide staff direction. And we have Cecilia Montalvo here. I'm from Founder Works, so please come on up.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Cecilia.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year. I am here to provide a brief update. It's been a while since we've talked about the hospital. So I have four, let this play catch up right there, four quick items to review with you. First is just the status as I understand it of how the hospital is doing. Also to remind and particularly Supervisor Velasquez as a new member of the priorities that we believe that the county should be focused on vis-à-vis the hospital. Present some options for where your attention could go. These were discussed at the ad hoc committee and then just discuss those recommendations and next steps. So first, I mean, the good news is, is the hospital continues financially to perform very, very well. The most recent financials that were discussed in public session were from November. And in that month, the hospital had a net surplus of $1.4 million. And they have a net surplus year-to-date of almost $8 million. That is considerably more than their budgeted year-to-date surplus, which was under $2 million. That's good. And is consistent with trends in healthcare. The inpatient volume, people that need to stay in the hospital, is actually lower than forecast. That's not unusual because so much is going to the outpatient and that Gates Hawkins is witnessing the same thing. We think this may, my opinion is, is that those numbers may be impacted by the loss of a couple of barely highly producing physicians in the area. They haven't left, but they're doing fewer procedures there, Dr. Gabriel, as well as the GI physician. So I am looking forward to seeing whether or not they're able to maintain their outpatient volume. The one thing to note about the way the hospital is doing is that the numbers they're reporting are inclusive. They've borne tremendous costs from the bankruptcy and the transaction itself. They have lawyers, advisors, et cetera. These are not broken out separately. So those costs are actually included in the hospital's financial statement. So vis-à-vis the items that I feel and we've discussed previously, just kind of returning as to what do we, what do you as a county really care about? I think at the end of the day, we all, it's broad agreement on these. You want to make sure your county residents have access to the highest quality healthcare services as is possible. I mean, that seems like a platitude, but in this county where access has been so poor to certain specialty services, to complex hospital services. to certain specialty services, to complex hospital services, your residents are traveling to get basic healthcare services. And this is an area that the entire county needs to concern itself with even more so than most, and then returning to the county directly. You need to prioritize emergency services, including behavioral health services, things that as a county you have direct responsibility for. If there was a loss of emergency services here, you would pay the cost of transporting people every time up to the Bay Area. So I do think that the county wants to facilitate as many options as are possible for the hospital. You don't have responsibility. I forgot to cover the top point here. The county does not oversee the healthcare district. They don't report to you, but the county has a role to play in healthcare in this area. And that's the point. So providing input, discussing these issues with district board members, et cetera, is entirely appropriate. So I also recommend that as transaction terms are developed, as the hospital moves forward potentially to lease or sell, that these are documents, the terms of the transaction, you care of. What terms are in these documents that will assure you that services are preserved? What is the fallback in the event that something goes wrong? These are things that the county cares about, and you want to provide that input. And finally, you know, there's the obvious. You want to make sure it's in compliance with state and local laws. I think that's the low bar. And finally, I want to emphasize the need for recourse because as we've seen, you don't read in local newspapers about hospitals failing, hospitals closing, hospitals being in bankruptcy. What will happen if something goes wrong with the suitor that's being discussed? And how will the county respond? And what are the terms in that agreement that give the county comfort? So those are the things that I think the county should care about. Little update, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions at the end. Update of things that I found somewhat interesting, lots of interesting things in the November election. But as it relates to the hospital here in San Benito County, I think we would all agree that the outcome of the election was not what I would have expected, let's just say. The county did not go to great lengths to talk about Measure B, which was your initiative to propose a joint powers authority. It was an advisory measure, it wasn't binding, but it was seeking community input. Again, there were town halls, we did discuss it, so I'm not going to say we didn't, but we all understand that a lot of people may not have even understood what this was. This passed by an overwhelming majority, over 70%. And I found that very interesting, which is all I can say. You can draw your own conclusions from that, but it really passed overwhelmingly. Now, Measure X, which was the hospital's measure to give the board authority to enter into any transaction with Insight or any other partner, also passed. But what was, those two things together don't make a lot of sense to me. Measure X passed by an extremely narrow margin. It was also at the very end of the ballot, which I don't know if people start voting no on things by the time they get to the end. So I'm not an elections expert, but I put those things side by side, and I find that interesting about where the community might stand on all of this. What it says to me is that there may be voter confusion. That's all I can conclude. So since the election, presumably you all in Benito link covered this, there was a fairly extensive expose published by The American Prospect about the proposed suitor, Insight Health, and how they performed elsewhere. And it was a fairly scathing piece of media, and it was, again, covered by Benito link. I think that that drew the attention of the healthcare district board. I think that there are questions that remain, that some of the newer board members, they do have two new board members on the district board, Dr. Nick Gabriel, as well as a nurse from St. Louis, her name is Victoria Angelo. So the newer board members may want to do their own additional diligence on the partner itself. As far as the district board, they've had two meetings since the November election. They had a November meeting, they had a December meeting. There was virtually, very minimal updates on the transaction. So I'm not sure what will happen this month, but we're going into three months have gone by since this passed without the transaction making substantial, at least in the public domain, there's been very, very little progress. But again, what I want to emphasize, that the county, if there are draft definitive agreements, this might be a place that the county wants to put some attention, and I look to David as well, just to focus on your priorities and to ensure that recourse exists. One thing I would note, it is not 100% clear to me that their coming up with a proposed transaction is certain not to be referendized. I've been advised that even though the authority under Measure X gave the district broad consent, that citizens could still come forward and say this specific transaction is subject to another vote. So I'm not sure what would happen with that. So I don't think I would be extremely redundant if I read this last slide, so I'm not going to do that. I do believe that, as always, one of the things that the county has done a great job with is just to try and assure that the citizens' desire for transparency and input on this topic of a transaction is preserved. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Cecilia. And we do have those board rules coming back next meeting, but unless there's objection from the majority, I was hoping to go to public comment and then come back with questions and comments. So I'm not seeing that. So if we could, please go to public comment.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, Rob Bernowski.
Welcome new board member Ignacio Velazquez. It's good to see you here. Thank you for the comment about pneumonia. It's going to be high on my list. So we're starting year three of us discussing the hospital and me coming before this podium. And I'm going to say, not a whole lot has changed, but I do, in case I run out of time, my ask is for you to continue the ad hoc committee and to stay on top of this. And just to embellish what the county just presented, it's by statute, you are the healthcare provider of last resort, the board indigent. So having a hospital here is really important to your mission. And just to reiterate, if the hospital were to go away today, five years from now, or 10 years from now, it changes the dynamics of San Benito County a lot because you're now in the transportation business up to Santa Clara County or down to Monterey or even up to San Jose. I also wanted to embellish the county's reporting. It didn't, I just want to say, since I've been here for two years, they've made, the surplus is $31 million, and their earnings are actually higher because the surplus includes depreciation and amortization. And the county did not report the cash balances. It's hovering around $30 million. Your wisdom two years ago to deny the bailout, because remember, they came here asking you for $10 million without a business plan, what they needed for, all they said is, we're in a crisis. And they had all these excuses, but they didn't have the business plan, which you guys actually funded just as a fail stop. So that is your wisdom, and I need that wisdom to continue because I would like to live and maybe die here in San Benito County. We won't live here without a hospital. I believe if there is, and that we as a community need to firmly support, if there is a referendum that can be put on the board to judge the sale to Insight, and Supervisor Velazquez, if you don't have the report that the county represented, I will email it to you, the media report on Insight. That is a bad deal from start to finish. It's not that the bad people, they just have a different agenda than we as a community have, and we need to change that. So the other thing is, as I've said before, they are a very sloppy organization. I've told them that, I've told you that. It even gets so sloppy, I got to be honest with you, I don't think anything that they've done in the past six years is actually valid. Their seats were vacant because it turns out, and your county council or the district attorney weighed in on it, they were never properly sworn in. That's just part of the sloppiness of their governance. So technically, their board seat's been vacant for six years, and their actions can be voided. Thank you.
I have no further public comment.
Cecilia?
I just wanted to ask if you had any questions related to that.
Thank you. So questions and comments, start with Supervisor Satello.
Okay, thank you. So I guess part of it, I really would have loved to have had some of the, I don't feel like the agenda pocket was really complete with this item. I really wasn't sure what we were going to be looking at today. I wish maybe some of the options kind of would have been presented, or at least this slide would have been presented. There was a whole lot of background, but, and then the fully executed resolution, but it wasn't, it wasn't real clear what exactly we were going to be discussing today with this item. So I apologize if I'm not totally kind of up to speed on some of it. I guess maybe some of my questions, I think it's great that we care and that we're doing all this work for our constituents. I would love to see us be collaborative partners. I have not sat on the ad hoc, so I don't know, have we been working with the hospital? Or have we had no dealings with the hospital since kind of the election? Would you be able to maybe answer that? Or somebody maybe on the ad hoc, what kind of our involvement has been to date?
Supervisor Curro?
No, you go right ahead.
Well, we've been on hold, so since the election, I think the board under Chair Curro, we all agreed to pause, push the pause button essentially until there was essentially more information as kind of this process.
Okay, okay.
But we are open, I think.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm suggesting, is that now, now we have some direction, and I would encourage you to continue that collaboration and try and meet, in my recommendations is to try and continue those meetings.
Okay. So I mean, I'm all for us being really collaborative. I think we need to be very careful that we're not being adversarial, that we truly are kind of a partner in this, and that, you know, obviously, we care a ton. I actually had to travel out of county yesterday to go for healthcare services, so I'm fully aware, and I understand the impact that it has on our citizens. And so I think we can all agree that we definitely want to make sure we have access to quality healthcare here. I want to be very respectful to the hospital district and their board, but I'm not opposed to us being, having an ad hoc and working together with them, as long as, like I said, in kind of a collaborative, respectful manner and not kind of adversarial. So, kind of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah, I don't have much to add other than, yeah, I think we should unpause the ad hoc. That would be something I just want to throw out there. Other than that, like I said, I have nothing else really to add. I do, I actually have a question. Is the ad hoc last met prior to the, was it December, November, prior to the election?
We've met since the election.
We've had, yeah, just information.
Without the hospital, yeah, the two members have met.
Okay, okay, I see, I see. Were you in a meeting before with hospital board members? Okay. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Velazquez?
I do have comments on this. Matter of fact, I had to change my oxygen tank to get more air because my heart started beating when this topic came up, and my molar machine can't keep up. This is a critical issue in our community. You kind of stated it early. At the end of the day, most of the public does not know there's another board. They're going to blame the county for all this, and we should be to blame for not informing the public of what's going on. This is not a game that should be played because this year we feel there's not enough funding and we have to sell our assets. I can tell you all, the minute somebody shows up to your community flying a private jet, bragging about how he's going to save you, or they're going to save you, is the minute you should start running. Because that's what's happening. They're going to get ahold of these assets and eventually start selling these things off. It's been done time and time again. Our hospital is critical to our community. I've, I've always experienced the best with Dr. Bogie and some of this stuff. Matter of fact, I got to spend one of my emergency days at our local hospital, and they took great care of me that night. But what happens to all those people that can't go out of town for services? Fortunately enough that my doctors recommended specialists in the field, and I just happened to be at another hospital that can take me in that day to do it. But a lot of our residents can't. And I see some heads shaking. I'm very frustrated. I hate to start it this way, lay this out. Now, financing and government is all about the board. I can remember before I became mayor of the City of Hollister, the City of Hollister was ready to claim bankruptcy because they just couldn't pull it together. Within two short years, we turned that around, paid off tens of millions of dollars of debt, and built up reserves of millions of dollars. In the last two short years, the city's already gone back into financial issues. Can this be solved at a hospital local level? Yes, it can be. It's not going to be perfect all the time, but by being strategic and good planning, a lot of this can be avoided. And there has to be better work from the hospital to be more transparent, and be even more frank. When your public information officer is attacking residents and attacking me personally, that shows you what kind of mentality is going on out in the community, and that should never, ever happen. We should be working together to provide the best services for this community and how we can eventually provide even better services. I happened to be in a hospital when they had a, I think it was called Code Red, because so many different hospitals couldn't accommodate what was going on. And I saw patient after patient being rushed through, and somehow Good Sound was able to manage that that day. But all I heard that whole, most of the time I was there, was how hospitals are really having a hard time keeping up. And if this happens here, you said it earlier, we're going to be on the hook for all that. So we have to try to go back and remember, our number one priority is taking care of our community, not someone else's bank accounts. And our hospital is one of the most important assets we have in this community. And I know, these things can be fixed, but we have to understand how precious they are to us, and if we lose them, how much it will cost to try to replace this. So let's please start new. Let's start in a way that we can work together, inform the public, and get these solutions done, because we need to protect, again, one of our most precious assets we have in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Curro.
I think all of the comments that have been stated, being on the ad hoc with Supervisor Cosmiki, which has been challenging by itself because going through the election process, I completely agree. The confusion of the voters is very apparent. I can't necessarily say the placement, but there is some data about further down the line, you get more no's than you do get yeses. But what I am concerned with is that we are not being transparent enough about what the future options are. And I agree that we need to continue the ad hoc, but I also agree that we should be continuing the ad hoc with inviting the board, at least two of the members of the board of directors, and having that conversation about what the next steps are and what we can do to support those endeavors. And in maintaining the hospital locally, I am still adamant that I want the hospital to stay local control, and if it's not under local control, that it's the best partner possible in our region that can make our hospital as successful and keep our residents here and, and change the narrative so that our residents, we have a huge medical population in this community that commute to the Bay Area. We have an opportunity to change that narrative of, oh, I won't ever work in at Hazel Hawkins, you know, there's all this torment, you know, turmoil going on, and I don't know if I'll still have a job, I'd rather commute. No, let's turn that around. This is an economic opportunity to get people not only working locally but off of our highways and ensure that we grow the services. So I think making sure that we are not building walls between the board members, and since there are two new board members... And since there are two new board members, hopefully that we could get new perspective. We have new board members on here, we can get some new perspectives. But being able to be transparent with what the options are, even as an ad hoc member, I am not fully informed of what's happening at the hospital level. And I think we do need to have more engagement with the hospital staff. So, that's my comment. But I do want to thank number one, Cecilia, and everyone that has been working on this ad hoc with the options and discussing. I know that the way the measure was written for Measure X, there are more than one option. It wasn't pigeon-toed into just insight. And I think that needs to constantly be reminded that it's not just insight, it's the best partner, I'm going to repeat what's been said by the hospital administration, it's the best partner possible that will keep it for our residents and keep the services here. So, those assurances are, are what my priorities are. So, thank you Cecilia for everything. And thank you Supervisor Cosmicke for all your work on that ad hoc.
Thank you Supervisor Curro.
Could I emphasize something that Supervisor Curro just said? Because I think I did glaze over it. I think in the middle of last year, I had some discussions with a couple of the systems that are in the Bay Area about Hazel Hawkins. And we were left with the impression that perhaps because they didn't have the right contact information, et cetera, that some of the Bay Area systems feel as though they were not presented with this opportunity last year. So, that is on my to-do list on the last page that's now taken down. Just encouraging, if, if, if it's reasonable, encouraging them to make sure that every option has been explored. And if there was interest on the part of any Bay Area suitor, that, that, that one final chance be, be made to get that known. Thank you.
Thank you Cecilia. Yeah, it was a great, great update. You know, a few things stood out to me. You know, we've talked already about this dynamic with Measure B and Measure X. You know, and to me, it's pretty clear based on the results that Measure B was the real result. As far as the, the public is concerned, it's unfortunate that there were these efforts to confuse voters. I don't think there's any other logical explanation for that anomaly, where you have Measure B as an advisory. But you can't get more of a landslide than we saw with Measure B. And then Measure X, of course, was extremely close. And so, I'm just hopeful that the healthcare district, just moving forward, will recognize there really wasn't what I would call a clear mandate from the community. And there still is this responsibility as a public body to recognize these things and to see that, you know, you had Measure B, where people were essentially telling us as a county, yes, we want to, we want local governments all work together and we want to keep this hospital, more importantly, we want to keep the hospital public. That was part of Measure B. And then on the other hand, you had Measure X, which was essentially, in a roundabout way, I'll be nice, saying, we want to sell the hospital. So, those two things, it doesn't add up, the dynamic there between those two. And, you know, Measure B, there really wasn't any campaigning. And when you take campaigning out of the mix and these efforts to intentionally confuse the voters, you see the result, it was over 70% of people that said, we want the hospital to remain public. So, you know, that's essentially my thoughts going forward is just hoping that, and urging the district to not only keep that in mind, that there wasn't a clear mandate, but also keeping other options on the table and informing the public and being clear that the voters gave authority to negotiate. They did not give authority to negotiate with just one specific entity. And that is a key aspect here. That, and I think from the county perspective, I, you know, I'm hearing we want to continue an ad hoc. So, I would certainly entertain, you know, a motion or getting consensus on that. But I also think just giving direction, perhaps to the ad hoc, I think I would recommend that it remains Supervisor Curro and myself since we've been dealing with this. But giving direction, if there is direction from the board on what you want out of this. Because what I would recommend is first off, communicating with the healthcare district board on public priorities and county impacts going forward and as far as what decisions they make. And really urging them to ensure that all options are being fully explored in a serious manner. And then just on the flip side, just the county being as transparent as we can, communicating to the public total. But do we have further direction on what we may want out of an ad hoc from any board members other than what Supervisor Curro stated and I essentially reiterated?
I don't, Mr. Chair, I don't have all the background information on what the ad hoc or your group has been doing in the past. I can say we did hear today that the hospital has been profitable, is showing positive revenues, and the public needs to know that. Because then the public is going to ask, why are we trying to sell that off to a company from, from Michigan? And I think it was just said, if there are other options here, hospitals have been working here in California nearby that maybe want to take the lead on that, that maybe that's a conversation. But the focus needs to be letting the public know that it's not that it's in dire financial strait now. It's, there's been an effort to just tell it. We just need to step back and remember, this is our, our hospital. And we need to make sure we're doing what we can to protect our, our residents here. So, I think obviously you guys have done some good work. The past, everything I'm hearing here, very interesting. So, thank you for all your work.
It's my understanding that, you know, as I said, there's new board members at the district, but that there, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think I am, that they have a new ad hoc committee on the transaction as well. And that would consist of Devin Pack, who has been on that ad hoc, but now also Dr. Nick Gabriel, I think is the other member. And so, that, I, I think that would be the pairing if I, if I'm.
Thank you Cecilia. And if I could just try to round this up, we want to continue the ad hoc and give direction to invite the district to sit down and have conversations about some of the things we've discussed going forward, continue strategizing with Cecilia. And then perhaps having my recommendation based off of Supervisor Velazquez would to see if Cecilia could put together a summary sheet of key points on where we're at, some of the things you had, not just the presentation, because sometimes the public doesn't want to click through a presentation like that. But maybe, you know, a one-pager key point update on all these important matters, like the finances and the fact that this, you know, the district board has the opportunity to invite other suitors to the table. Supervisor Curro?
The only thing I'd like to ask the board if they would consider is the ad hoc being more informed of the services specifically that are shared with the county and how we can collaborate with those services, whether it be with HHSA, Public Health, all the entities. I, I just think adding that component in there might be able to spark a conversation with the ad hoc of the hospital district to be more collaborative, if the board wishes.
I'd agree. Seeing heads shaking. Anything further?
I'm just going back to the financial part. Our residents need to note that even if the hospital is sold, they're still going to be paying taxes from their previous commitments. And I don't think a lot of the public understands that. So, again, the main numbers are one of the most important aspects of anything we're doing here in government or in business. And we need to be very clear what those numbers look like, whether it's sold or not, how we're still on the hook for part of it.
Perhaps that could be included as well.
Absolutely.
So, I would just entertain a motion, give direction to continue the ad hoc and to also to have Cecilia, if she's so willing, to put together a key, a summary sheet of key updates for the community that we could promote, not only in a press release form, but also in social media and however we get the word out. And have a motion as recommended?
A move.
Second?
Second.
Supervisor Curro, all is in favor. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cosmicke?
Yes.
Supervisor Zinger?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello? Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much and thank you Cecilia.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Yeah, you too. So, that brings us to 2.2. This is the presentation on Title 25 Sections Coming Back on 2025 for Adoption, Permanent Removal of Gas Stations, Charging Stations, Mini-Marts and Ag Zoning, from Ag Zoning Designations and Sections to Review After Adoption of the Ag Element. Provide further. And we have Ariel Goodspeed from Planning here to provide a presentation.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors, Members of the Public. Happy New Year. Thank you so much for having me back here today to get some final feedback to, on what to bring back and, and what to postpone. Again, thank you for the introduction. Cosmicke, Ariel Goodspeed, Principal Planner for the County of San Benito. So, we were here in November 26. We received some initial feedback and from the board. And from their staff took its first initial step of case meeting, you know, what was to be removed completely, that was clear direction. But what was to be postponed until after the Ag element and then pieces to just move forward with this year. I do have a couple of points of discussion as, as we go through. So, the first is this development plan review threshold we looked at increasing. That needs to be postponed through the direction received unless there's further direction today. And I apologize, I did my best to try to make this as clear as possible. I grayed out sections that, you know, were to maybe continue moving forward. In red, permanently remove gas stations, charging stations, mini-marts from Ag. Pieces to postpone as we discuss development plan thresholds. A lot of the bed and breakfast, hotel, ag products, tasting rooms, those are highlighted because they were changing due to the development plan thresholds. However, there were, and they're already existing in our, in our code and as things with agrotourism. But there was a couple of points that we could maybe get some final feedback from the board. And it had to do, like currently we have in there winery. One of the comments had been to do brewery, distillery, winery, and may include tasting rooms, and then also off-site tasting rooms. The reason those had kind of been, you know, put in there was for the agrotourism element. There will be in our, that's in their existing general plan in our Ag element we're working on, there's still going to be a component of agrotourism in our Ag zones. You know, so it's one where we could wait or you could continue to move forward with, and it wouldn't necessarily be inconsistent. We also had specified, you know, we had broken out previously the sale of agricultural products in the county versus out of the county. We had just condensed it to just sale of agricultural products and pack and feed supplies. So, it wouldn't have the development threshold piece, but just, you know, that clarifying language, simplifying, it wouldn't necessarily be against. Venue, I could see maybe you wanting to postpone that further, have more discussions. So, I just, there was a couple of pieces in there that just I would look forward to your feedback. Then, remove permanently, just as just continuing to clarify. Animal keeping, number of farm animals, this should all, we should continue this conversation for after the Ag element. Now, sections to bring back. Specifically, a lot of these sections had to do with code cases that county had been working on and realizing we needed some additional development standards on particular codes, you know, to be able to handle that as it comes in. One, we included public hearing procedures, noticing we changed, you know, from 300 feet to 1,000 feet. In a lot of cases, we actually already do this, but just putting it into our code, we're going to further, you know, who's going to get those notices from the counties who have moved forward for projects. Appeals, expansion, non-conforming uses, structures and sites. I don't think this would affect Ag element. It's just adding additional clarifying language currently staff as to consider, you know, bring back. The crowing file permits, this had been a priority from the board, especially considering cockfighting. I don't think, a lot of it's clarifying about, you know, what are the penal procedures for that? And it added just some standards for those that were going to be pulling crowing file permits. I, I don't think it's something that necessarily has to wait till after the Ag element. But if, if there's any concerns, you know, we're happy to revisit it. This was removed as discussed. And then this is the same table as I showed before. And in the black text is the pieces to bring back. There was just some additional language in the short-term rentals just for being able to regulate that. The commercial kennels, shooting, commercial sports shooting. Kennels was to deal with code cases, just that they're, these are the development standards if you were to have a kennel or a commercial kennel. We could, if it was the board's direction, we could have the development standards, but we could not include it necessarily in the land use tables at this point in time. And the sports shooting is more than just an Ag zone, it's also an industrial zone. So, if it was something, we have development standards if someone wants to do it. Maybe we allow it in industrial zones for now and we revisit it after we've done the Ag element. We think we need some more discussion on that one. But it kind of pertained to some different. Now, the private outdoor camping facilities, we had updated one part of the code, but we hadn't updated the land use tables. So, it's just putting it in the land use tables on the code you already adopted. Similarly, with the cannabis amendments, we adopted those amendments, but we just need to update our tables to match those amendments. So, it's just cleanup. And I, I discussed the hobby kennels. And then in the commercial zones, we were adding additional like agrotourism pieces into commercial zones, the brewery, distillery, winery, you know, farm equipment sale. So, not anything that's necessarily not compatible, but it just wasn't necessarily something specified. So, so it would have to be something that had a commercial general plan designation and zoning. But just, we are an Ag community and so looking at it more zones. Similarly, in the industrial as well. And then continuing to bring back for adoption, things we had looked at in industrial zones, except for the removal of gas stations, charging stations, mini-marts. So, then general development design standards, this had to do with just a few cleanup pieces that had happened back in 2022. ADUs, this is something that had been changed before. Right now, we allow one ADU as long as you have, you know, water and septic needs, we meet the state requirements. However, the state does allow that you could have two ADUs if adopted by ordinance. So, you can have one, currently can have one ADU, one JADU. And so, this would allow two ADUs as long as it would be something that, you know, they would have water and septic or sewers supply to the property. So, this is an additional change. It wasn't something that had been presented as a concern from the board at our last meeting. So, we brought it, we included as bring back for adoption. Mobile home and recreational vehicles, this was mainly a discussion of a topic out of code enforcement and just, you know, regulating flight, regulating people living in a mobile home not connected to services. And so, that is what was in there. This is the development standards section. And so, on pet shops, commercial kennels, hobby kennels, development standards for sports shooting, indoor shooting reins, renewable energy facilities, lowering the height 20 feet to 15 feet. And this really had to do with our general plan policies and view sheds. Moveable tiny homes, just a couple cleanup items. Short-term rentals, just a few additional cleanup items. And then glossary that related, you know, back to all the different code. And then other additional cleanup as, you know, we have, went from an army director to a planning director. And so, just some cleanup through the code. to Planning Director, and so just some cleanup through the code. And I am recommending that the board gives us direction.
Thank you very much. Can we please go to public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Bring it back for questions, comments. Supervisor Settle.
Thank you. Thank you, Ariel, for all your hard work on this and making sure that some of the things that we did back in 2022 are finally getting updated. I have a question for you. I know that like we're really kind of focusing on, going off of the comments last week about tourism and kind of really focusing there. And I think that's an effort that the community really wants us to explore. And I'm just curious, if we eliminate the gas stations, the, was it gas stations, mini mart, and what was the other one?
Charging.
Charging stations, yes, there you go. Does that, I'm concerned about possibly limiting our infrastructure that would be supportive for the tourism industry that we're hoping to attract, you know? And I'm thinking as you go down towards Pinnacles, let's say, are we possibly setting a precedent that can't be like, we are going to shoot ourselves in the foot, but there will be no options and that there is a need for, I mean, that's 45 minutes to an hour out. I don't know possibly Supervisor Kuro, how many gas stations are between Hollister and Pinnacles?
One.
Is that Trespinos? And so I'm just concerned that like, we're really trying to work in that arena and do what we can to support that industry. But I'm concerned that at the same time, we may be really limiting our options, moving forward by saying a kind of a blanket no or a blanket yes. But I would almost rather see us kind of look at projects on kind of their merit and what is going on in that moment. Does it make sense? Does it support kind of what we're trying to do versus just saying kind of no to all of it? I get in some areas, this makes perfect sense for it to be a no. I'm not sure that it makes sense for it to be a no in absolutely every location, especially as we're trying to promote tourism. We're trying to promote people to kind of invest here. One, we're going to need more businesses to open that will be welcoming for the tourism industry and encourage more people to come here. And so I just worry that, do we have the infrastructure to support that tourism industry with putting something like this through? And so, you know, that's kind of, I don't know that it's real more, it's not so much a question to you, it's really more to the board in, you know, kind of what are their thoughts with that? So, but I really appreciate your work on this, so thank you.
I just for conversational piece as the board deliberates. It's a no in our Ag zonings, but any of those zones could do a general plan and zone change add to commercial and then would be allowed. And so that would just be part of the applicant's application. And then of course, you know, as we work through our Ag element or other agrotourism, you know, if there's maybe specific areas identified where we look at allowing things, you know, staff is happy to move forward in any fashion.
Thank you for that clarification. What is the cost per se if somebody was to go through with a general plan zone change and all of that? Like what would, is there a significant cost increase for the applicant?
So, yes, a general plan amendment and zone change can be, we have our costs, there's, you know, $10,000 deposits and that's just beginning, you know, costs on, on some of those because it really depends on the staff time put into it. Additionally, you're subject to SEQA, most likely, and EIR, those can range in hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, that would, that would still, the, the cost of the IR would still be the case, most likely, even if it was an Ag zone. So that's part isn't changing. What's changing would be those additional deposits for those unchanged in our plan. So you're looking at another $20,000 deposit per staff.
Thank you, Supervisor Zinger.
Yeah, thank you. So just a couple of questions. How does it work currently with conditional use permits and Ag zoning? So if a gas station currently, if we didn't adopt anything today, if none of this happened, how would that work? Could the gas station right now apply for a CUP and then in Ag zone? Or how would it work?
No, they would not be able to currently do it now. It would have to, if there was a general plan designation, because we have multiple areas around the county where we have a general plan and there's commercial designations, but the zoning hasn't been updated. So most of those, it requires a zone change with the conditional use permit. And then if we were looking at specific areas along going towards Pinnacles, then those are Ag general plan designations and we require both a general plan amendment and zone change.
Got it, got it. So, so then if we remove these, these red items, the gas stations, charging stations, mini marts, alternative fuel. Also, just for the record, when it, on the land use tables presentation, it does say charging stations. Does that include alternative fuel stations? Like, I know that was talked about, that was quoted.
Currently, the, from the understanding of the direction was to remove it, but we could consider that further, but that was the direction staff understood as we left on the 26.
Okay.
Was to remove it from Ag zones.
Got it, got it. I was just making sure, because I think, because it just says gas and charging stations. So I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, so like EV charging stations for, you know, your Tesla.
No, I understand that, I understand that. I guess, I'm trying to say like, like alternative fuel before, I'm just saying maybe it was left out of here or maybe I'm misreading it, but that like the, I don't know, propane or whatever else there would be.
I think if I may, I think he's referring to alternative fuel, just to make sure that that's in the grouping that we may or may not decide to eliminate. So it would be mini marts, gas stations, alternative fuel stations and charging.
Well, yeah, that's, I think, how it was, yeah, exactly, presented before. And then I just want to make sure that that was, if we went this route, that was included, you know, with the gas stations and charge.
Correct. And I just want to, as a point of clarification, renewable energy generation facilities has something that's been previously allowed in our Ag zones. It wasn't something that changed as part of this, but, you know, solar farms or, you know, wind farms, those would fall under renewable energy generation facilities. That would require coming back depending on the application type, whether it was a commercial use primary administration. So those are currently allowed.
Got it, got it. Okay, well, just, I'm sort of in the same school of thought I was at the end of last year as far as removing the gas stations, charging stations, alternative fuel, mini marts from Ag zoning. Needless of agrotourism, I don't have a problem with tasting rooms, wineries, anything like that. But I would still like to remove those items from the Ag zoning. And I guess if, if really one really did want to come forward and it made sense, I think they can always apply for the, the general zone change and get compatible like that. That's basically it.
Supervisor Velazquez.
Quick question. They mentioned of wineries or different facilities. There's nothing to stop them from adding services as charging stations within their facilities for their own customers. Would that be correct?
They could put it as part of their use permit application that went into planning commission.
Yeah, so if somebody has a business, again, a winery, they can have charging stations for their, their customers and.
It's not completely spelled out. And so sometimes for an applicant, for staff, for the planning commission, it is a little bit more clear if it is spelled out in our, in code.
Well, let me just take it to this point. So Pinnacles National Park wants to add some more charging stations. There's nothing to stop them from adding more charging stations for their people, the visitors visiting, correct?
It's out of our jurisdiction, so yes, they can.
Yeah, well, my point is, some of these businesses that are bringing people, they should be providing some of these services already. So there's not this, you know, when people are traveling destination wise to go do something, they're usually going for a reason. Maybe they're going to go taste wine, they're going to park their car, they're going to plug it in, the services will be there. And, you know, the world is changing quite quickly. And I think the idea of this new gas station is popping up everywhere, really not financially, probably not financially feasible anymore unless it's some massive truck stop that somebody's making some money, but at the consequence of everybody else. So I think where, from what I've seen so far, I think a lot of what you have done is making sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Kuro.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And I know it's a lot of cleanup and it's a lot of work. So, and we are constantly evolving as a board with direction. So I just want to thank you for all your hard work. Couple of questions, and I may not have this completely right, so please, I apologize if I'm not fully abreast of all of this stuff. But when it comes to the, the Ag element and how these changes are affecting that, the Ag element is like a separate entity to all of this, isn't it? Or it's like a layer on top of, of this?
Yeah, so the Ag element is its own, going to be its own general plan element. So it's going to be the guiding principles of how we then enact the zoning. The zoning code is basically, you know, boots on the ground of what this overarching policy is.
Gotcha, gotcha. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. And then, so we're talking about, pardon me, we're talking about removal of fueling stations, regardless if they're charging stations, electric charging stations, or any of that from the Ag zoning, which means if it is currently, I'm thinking South County, I'm thinking we, we passed the low impact camping ordinance. Some, if this blossoms into something, there may be need for, you know, maybe diesel or some sort of fueling that, that instead of having to come all the way here or going to another county, I mean, coming up to Hollister, that they could get down there. Is, is, this would just completely eliminate it from Ag and require it to turn to commercial, which would invoke a measure A requirement because it's zoned Ag. In order for it to change that, it would be a commercial and it would be a measure A ballot measure to the voters. I want to make sure I understand it.
One of my, in listening to the board members, I might suggest that maybe we look at EV charging stations, if it's coming with an application of, you know, something else or something that goes to, you know, planning commission. That way it could allow, you know, for that opportunity within the county.
Well, I just want to reiterate, I completely agree with the, the outcome of the election, the no growth. I completely agree, we do not want to have gas stations popping up all over the place. But if we completely eliminate, I'm going to agree with Supervisor Settle, if we completely eliminate everything, are we opening another issue that we're not thinking about? Could it be that it is only exceptions, maybe even that are board exceptions? And that they have to not only meet certain criteria, but a development standard that blends with our rural environment, not a truck stop, not a quick mart, not a, you know, not to use brands, but, you know, something that will promote the agrotourism and still keep the rural community. But also potentially, it would be for safety, you know, because right now, if you're stranded somewhere in South County, unless you have a, a nice neighbor that comes by and saves you, you sometimes can be stranded for some time. So if you're out of power from your EV charging station or you're out of gas or whatever it could be, I just feel like it should be an, an exception to allow it, but not a complete removal so that we can promote that tourism industry. That's my only comment.
Okay. Staff is happy to maybe put it in the category where after we finish our Ag element, we bring back, as we look at the code again after adoption of the Ag element, and there's more work, you know, on the agrotourism, you know, piece of that, you know, we can look at considering that.
I think my only comment would be, is ensuring that if a business, like Supervisor Velazquez stated, if it's an Ag business that already has it and they want to expand it, whether it's for their guests or for their business, if it has to be rezoned and then it has to go to a vote of the voters, I would not want that to be a consequence of these actions. So if there could be clarification that maybe they're not hurt in this, that's my, that's my biggest concern and I appreciate the time.
You could also be very limited. You allow one to, you know, you're not doing an entire station of EV charging. So that's another option. Lots, lots of ways to go about this. It's so funny.
Thank you, Supervisor Ariel. I just want to start off, thank the public. I think this is one of those issues where really the public came out and spoke out and it's really what this should all be about. I don't want to reiterate prior comments other than, you know, it just doesn't make, we're talking about Ag zoning. I think there are ways to address some of the concerns we have here about not shutting business out altogether, but we're talking about Ag zoning and it just isn't, in my view, appropriate to have mini marts, which aren't even defined, and gas stations and opening the door for these entities that could, you know, turn out to be a truck stop, like I've said in the past. As far as, so I do want to remove them for now, take them out of the discussion permanently, essentially. I think you, as was pointed out, you have the option to pursue zone changes that can be further scrutinized for consideration, the applicant or this board. And what I would say is, again, referencing again, another future item, I've asked for the general plan to come back for discussion and to get it, maybe for us as a new board to go through and look at areas. And so I would just suggest as part of that process that we discuss whether perhaps there's an area between Trespinos and Pinnacles where there might, it might be appropriate for commercial zoning, which would essentially allow these uses if the board and the public sees fit. And that would be my suggestion on that, since that would be hopefully coming back if the board majority agrees to that, to have that discussion. And then as far as Supervisor Velazquez's very good point he made, I would suggest removing the notion of standalone stations, but bringing back for discussion, having, allowing existing businesses to explore a limited scope charging stations, whether that's one, two, three, four, five. I don't know what the number is, but I know obviously you go to places, you know, when some of these businesses have them for a reason. So that would be my suggestion on that. But otherwise, I would, I would agree with our prior direction to permanently remove just from the Ag zoning itself and then explore these other means to, to open the door potentially for limited use in commercial zoning and, and perhaps Ag zoning if it's limited scope. But that said, that's my recommendation, but if I could entertain any emotion or if the board agrees with that, I certainly could. Go ahead, Supervisor Kuro.
I, I still have so many questions about measure A that I don't understand. And, and I just, my biggest concern is ensuring that if we do bring it back and do a zoning change in certain areas for that consideration, does that mean that we have to go to the vote of the voters because we would be doing a zoning change as opposed to an applicant?
If through the chair and the.
Ariel, please, whoever has the answer.
Yeah, if through the chair and the board. Actually, staff has been working diligently with county council on this and we have been working to bring a presentation at the first February meeting to go over, you know, all those questions that are, are out there.
So removing it, can, can anyone answer that? If we remove it right now, can we bring it back through a zone change without having to go to a vote of the voters?
Remove what?
If we remove gas stations or refueling stations from the Ag process or element, to bring it back, if we're going to go down the path that we have to zone it commercial, will that require an Ag zone right now and we decide as a body to make it a, a commercial zoned area? Is that within our purview or does measure A require that to go to a vote of the voters?
Measure A may trump that decision by the board, but as Ariel said, we are seriously looking at the effects of measure A on county development and we have developers who are asking the questions, who are devising answers for those and we'll bring it back. I can't answer exactly what measure A did right now.
Thank you.
And then through, through the chair. And then through the chair, so zoning, what measure A does is it affects general plan amendments. If you're changing the general plan from ag to commercial, it requires a vote of the people. What we're discussing is how the zoning code itself, which I, we could look at further. I don't think what we're discussing would be necessarily something that affects the people. We're not changing the designation of the ag, we're just talking about, you know, uses.
If I may elaborate, I think if there's, if there's a shift in public will and there's the world changes with, we didn't know charging stations were going to be a thing 20 years ago. So I think it could potentially warrant discussion about ag zoning. But I will say that this may be a primary, you know, there were all these discussions during the election about how measure A would essentially shut out all business. I would beg to differ on this particular issue, that this could be an example of something where if somebody wants, if there is a will to rezone an area between Prespinos and the Pinnacles, that I think that would be an area where it would be a test case certainly, but I think the public, in my view, would probably get behind something like that because it would be promoting tourism, which I think was part of the intent of that measure. But certainly a very good question as far as, you know, certainly we're immediately dealing with the after effects of measure A. But I do think that the discussion, we could still have a discussion about that, particularly because of Pinnacles and how we're going to be talking about home of Pinnacles National Park. I see that as something the public probably.
Just a question, yeah. So we're talking about the land use tables and and what's allowed in certain zoning. We're changing it right now. Theoretically, could this be changed back and like changed at any time in the future? Or is this some kind of binding?
Nope, I don't, I don't foresee any issue with changing in the future at this time. I can double check elements of measure A, but code, zoning code in general should be regularly updated because laws are constantly changing every single year. And so it's important that we actually do regular updates.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much. Do we have any thoughts on a potential motion?
You sort of had a motion?
My recommendation, as stated in November, I believe, was to eliminate these gas stations, mini marts, alternative fuel stations, charging stations from the further discussion on the zoning code that will be coming back when we deal with the ag element. And then to consider other matters as we go through the general plan discussion and to also bring back the potential for allowing limited scope charging stations on an existing ag property. Anybody want to?
Yeah, move just stated.
There's a first.
A second.
We have a second. All's in favor, roll call vote please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello? Supervisor Curl?
I'm no, because I don't feel confident about measure A, sorry.
And Supervisor Velasquez?
Yes.
Three, two, vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. And if it's okay, we may take a five minute recess.
Thank you.
No, I'm good.
Recording in progress.
Ready, yeah, the meeting is back in session. We'd be moving on to 2.3 impact fee report, and we have Dulce Alonso here. I just want to note real briefly that this normally would be a routine annual adoption item, but I just wanted to make sure if this was on regular agenda to allow for discussion and direction on the broader topic of impact fees, since we have a new board in place and this is such a big topic. So Dulce, please go ahead.
Good morning, board, and thank you for this opportunity. And this is our annual impact fee with the with the balances as of June 30th of 2024. And I'll just. So state law requires that we make this report available for public view and circulation at least 10 days before adoption, which we have complied with. This report was at the last board meeting and hasn't changed since. So I briefly want to want to base, want to emphasize that this this report is in compliance with California Government Code 66001 and 66006, which requires us to report out that the fund balance, any transfers in and out, what the intentions, future projects that are going to be paid out of the impact fees and anything that was spent up to date and how much of the projects we've completed. So all that information is included on the report. Briefly summarizing the, I'm just going to leave it at the summary, but the county currently collects county fire, law enforcement, impact fees, detention, habitat impact fees, road equipment, parks and recs, drainage impact fees, traffic impact fees, library, general government and IT impact fees. So if you look at the, at the summary report, it'll have the balance for for each of the actual impact fees. I'm not going to go through each item and and go into the details on on the projects, but if you want or have any questions, I can certainly go to that section. With that, it's, this report's here for the board's adoption and and/or to provide any direction on anything further. But this report does meet the the requirement of our annual reporting for for all of our impacts. So thank you.
Thank you Dulce. Public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Bring it back to the board for questions, comments. I'll start this time on the other side. Supervisor Curl, questions or comments?
Just to understand, because we had a draft development impact fee nexus study that was updated on January 12th of 2024, and it was done by the Wildon Financial Services.
Yeah, so that's separate from this.
That's separate from this.
I can provide an update on that.
That's kind of where I was going, because I didn't see how that was in, yeah. Could you, if that's okay with the chair, I'm not hopefully going too far off topic because it is about impact fees.
Yeah, so so that report, we we had a contractor working and the contract expired. Currently, county council's reviewing the contract to extend the the term because the, when we originally had them on, direction that was given to the board in the past was to look at the growth numbers because the projections used in that study were were inflated or were higher. So we are still working with a consultant. He used the newer newest numbers from, and I'm trying to think of the organization name.
Ambag?
Yes.
I know where you're at. I'm learning too.
Thank you for those. So we're working, we use our new numbers. He provided a draft copy that I can circulate to the board and in the future he'll, we'll bring that study back for the board's input and into consideration. But but yeah, so that was separate from this.
Great. I just wanted to understand the two and how they work together. When it comes to the the impact fees, this is as of June 30th of 2024.
Correct.
And we're looking at fund balances that are are listed. I'm on page five of the document. I don't know the history of impact fees. Is there a reason why the fund balance for parks and recs versus the fund balance for county fire or law enforcement are so different? I don't know the history and maybe Chair Cosmiki might be able to give me a little history lesson there. I don't know the history on that. I'd just like to understand.
It's based on what the, what are, what we charge and and depending on where they fall some, not not every development pays every single impact fees depending on, for example, like the drainage impact fee, it doesn't, isn't everywhere. And there are different rates based on the projects. So I can bring the rate, I can take you to the rate sheet.
And I can do this offline with you just to educate myself more. I don't want to waste the board's time. I just, the one thing that struck me is how much the fund balance was for parks and rec versus county fire, and and that was a concern of mine. I just wanted to bring that up. And and thank you, we can, we can go through this offline if you'd like.
And it's also based on the our contracted amount and what we were, what projects we're planning on the horizon. So the projects we're using to collect the impact fees for parks are a lot greater than the ones for fire. So but when Will Dan comes back, we will certainly expand on that and how the fees are calculated.
In lieu of the fires in Southern California, I'm really, no matter how much I support parks, life safety in our community is the utmost priority. So I just wanted to have that conversation. Thank you.
Supervisor Velasquez?
I thank you for bringing up the questions Supervisor. The amount charged for impact fees, CFDs are really, it's going to be critical to the future of this county. In the past, there's been a tendency to keep some of these fees artificially low. And I think, I know, I'm just hearing you're doing this study, and I think it's very important to understand the levels of service we're looking for too. Because in the past, it's been, well, it's okay, it's rural over there, and all of a sudden, there's a new development and we're we're facing the impacts of it. You know, what level of service are we looking for for our roads? Are we going to keep accepting a lower level of service because we can never catch up on those fees to to do things right? So, you know, we need as a board to set a certain level, are we going to stay with, you know, B as a as a minimum level of service or what are we changing? The fire impact fee, I can remember having these conversations years ago while I was at the city and the county, and there was an effort at that time to keep those fees low. And I had warned the county that the city had raised their fees up and they really need to be looking at the correct fee for the fire services and law enforcement and many other categories. I think it's, I'd like to have that deep discussion, not only on the impact fees, but CFD fees, the community facility district fees, to make sure they're matching, what the true costs are and not, you know, again, hearing this story of, oh, it's a rural area, so it doesn't really impact us. And then the next day, lo and behold, there's a project that was being proposed that wasn't in those discussions because it catches us really quick and then the public wants to understand why we can't keep up the roads. You're looking at some of these projects, and I know this is going, part of this is going to have to go through COG and different things, but one of the conversations that used to really disturb me the most was future growth and the future growth and the amount that we need to provide the network of improvements along airline highway, for example, from Sunset through Fairview. That's a now probably 100 plus million dollar project. From Union Airline to the 156, you're over 100 plus million dollars. These are all costs that are out there. If we're not collecting or we're not making the effort to identify true costs, we're putting ourselves in trouble here and we're never going to catch up. So we need to know that from a county perspective because this, that will go eventually through COG. But also the other roads within the newer areas that are being approved. We want to make sure, as I say, any development should cover its cost 100% from the day one until the last boards turn, tore off of that project in 100 something years. We cannot afford to subsidize anymore or make excuses for the past. We know, we know now what we need to be doing. Also, when I have those conversations about some of the other, I think, finally still here, we need to really be looking at some of the other requirements for some of these other developments as far as minimum requirements, the walls, block wall, finished block walls for fire issues. We've talked about gray water in the past. There's so many things we can do to help us get ready for the future and offset future costs just by being strategic now. But understanding these numbers are critically important. And, and again, I'm hearing you guys are doing this already, but I think we need to have a deep discussion of what level of service we want to capture the right impact and CFDs.
Supervisor, thank you, Supervisor Zenger.
Yes. Basically, I agree with what was just stated as far as making sure that we are getting what we ought to be getting from the impact fees. Essentially, I'd like to make sure that we're maximizing what we can get to provide a high quality service. And I don't know exactly the process, but I think it's going to warrant further discussion on impact fees in general. And on that note, we talked about a while ago implementing an impact fee for arts. I know Jennifer from the Arts Council, I talked about for new development, it would be like an impact fee that would put some percentage to public art. And so I just want to make sure that we are looking at things like that particularly, as well as any other similar type of fees that we aren't requiring at the moment that I want to see if we can start implementing. Go ahead.
And I couldn't answer that. We have an analyst, actually Sonia, who is recently on board. She's working on a, on an art ordinance with the Arts Council. But it would be a, not an impact fee, but a fee that would be, that would be coming in that proposal. But that, that's separate from the study and we're not including that in the impact fees, but it's, it would be a user fee, separate from the, so it is coming.
Well, if it wouldn't be an impact fee, it would just be a, what would, just like a fee?
It would be a fee, kind of like a permitting fee that would be charged. And, and we're proposing, that would come later. And I don't know if, Sonya, you know that you recall the details offline of what we're proposing in there? Okay. So we can bring that back, guys, out of.
Okay.
But, but it, but it wouldn't be, we're not considering that in this new update study, but it's part of a fee that would be charged.
Got it. So it's separate. Okay.
And, and also I do, I do want to clarify that the traffic, traffic impact fee, COG does oversee, so that's not included in the study. So we would urge COG if they could look at the, the traffic impact fee again and do a nexus study to see if we could increase that as well, which I would recommend maybe for the board's consideration.
I will say that's 100% on the way. Thank you so much. You know, impact fees to me are at the heart of many of our biggest problems here in this community. Oh, I'm so sorry, Supervisor Setello, I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
I, as well, like I really look forward to the impact study fee coming back to us. And, you know, I don't want to reiterate what everybody has said, but thank you Supervisor Zenger for the arts piece. I wouldn't be, like, I don't know what the difference is. And I guess as a supervisor, I would love to see the difference between it being included as an impact or a user fee. Kind of what the difference is and kind of what the forecast of that is. Is it received better if it's a user fee versus an impact fee? I don't know. I would like to learn more about why we're looking at going that way versus including it as one of the impact fees. I do have a question though, as you get into the, kind of more of the heart of the report. There was a, on page 38, there was a note number one, inter-fund loans for Quail Hollow CSA 46. There was a loan that we gave to Quail Hollow, to that CSA, for an emergency repair of a retaining wall. The loan was approved by the Board of Supervisors in February 2020. The loan was for $69,000. There was no interest for five years. They were to make two payments per year and the loan was to be paid in full December 2024. To date, they've paid $34,500 and they still have an outstanding balance of $34,500. Just something that like I am kind of a detail kind of. And so I saw it and I thought, it's included here. So I'm going to ask the question, what's happening with this? And when will we be, you know, how come we haven't collected the remaining? How come they didn't stay good on their end of the two payments per year? Are we now going to be collecting interest and all of that? So, and I don't know that that's something you can answer today, but I, I thought it is in this report. And just kind of curious, I think there's been a lot of instances over the last year where we've kind of seen things that we should have been collecting that maybe we weren't and that kind of got dropped. And so I just want to make sure when we see things like this, we flag them and that we do our, you know, everything we can. You know, $34,500 here, 100,000 there, 5,000 here, it really adds up. So just curious if you have any information on that. Yeah. So actually, when I was doing the report, I wanted to get that updated. The loan has been paid out because it is due and it would have been reflected in the transfers. And, and it's something we have to bring up to date. And, and I'll be working with RME staff to ensure that the repayment. But you, you are correct. It hasn't occurred where it's been transferred out. And we will look, look for a solution for that. It should be. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, and I apologize. Totally unintentional. Good Vice Chair work. Dom, so yeah, so again, just I think it's at the heart of a lot of our problems we've had historically. It's just not really making enough of an effort to charge, you know, what the true impacts are to the community from development. So I appreciate just kind of an update on where we're at, the study itself. Again, just to reiterate, the study that we initially came back, if you had used those projects, because there's obviously a variety of different growth projection models. And the one that was being used was showing that we were going to grow quite, quite a lot, a lot more than it's what's realistic. And if you had used those numbers, then the impact fees on a per development basis would have been reflected in being much, potentially much lower again than where we really, where we really should be at. So it's important to have accurate growth projections. The timeline on, you talked about the study potentially, there's a draft of the study. Is there, do we have a timeline on when that may come back? Because I think this, for me at least, and I'm hoping there's consensus, this should be kind of at the top of the list of priorities for this county.
Yeah, certainly within the next three months.
Is it, is there something, is there something, because you said there's a draft?
It would be, so I could circulate the draft and we could, we can do outreach and have the draft available. But it would be, it's more the hearing notices that we need to send out to the paper prior to the board's consideration. So we could bring, bring back a discussion item and then once we get direction, bring that back for adoption. So I would imagine if, within the next three months, we could potentially adopt new fees.
But could we have a conversation to take a look at the draft now?
Yeah, certainly.
And have a conversation about, are there pieces that are, are there pieces that are missing from this? That we might want to look at? I'm assuming there maybe are that we want to look at to have Will Dan do hopefully maybe a little bit more work and refining, again, just to make sure that we have everything that's possible on the table. Because I would like to see a discussion relatively soon about analyzing all the possible categories of fees, what the fees are. Now, I think the service level conversation that Supervisor Velazquez brought up is relevant. And I would, but it also may relate largely to roads. So I think, you know, I would recommend that the county strongly urge COG to essentially take up what was discussed here as far as whether it requires a resolution or just direction, urging COG to start that now as far as looking at potential study to revise the traffic impact fees. But yeah, that's, that would be my recommendation is to bring back, get the draft out there. If it can be circulated even by, and Supervisor Curro has something, I'll go back to you.
No, no, I don't want to interrupt you because you're on a great roll right now and I completely 100% agree. Can we add to that, the conversation that Supervisor Velazquez brought about CSAs? Because there is a major problem with CSAs and getting property owners. And I know staff has been meeting with them, but we can't keep subsidizing CSAs. That is for their developments and for property owners to pay. And I know it's not a pretty conversation, but if we could add that, I would super support it.
If you want to take the, do the motion, I just was throwing out some ideas, but this is why we elaborate. That's great. But to have the report distributed as soon as possible, I think you could probably just email it to all of us.
I just sent it to everybody.
Okay, great. And then to have that discussion come back with what we've discussed here as far as a range of fees, service levels, CSAs, that we can give further direction before we come back for the whole hearing.
Sounds.
Do we need a vote on that, County Council? Would it be wise?
And in addition, I do need the adoption of the annual.
Of course. Appreciate that. Yeah.
It's just direction to staff.
There's consensus I'm seeing. Okay, so there's consensus there. Appreciate that. And then what I, I would like to entertain a motion then obviously for the annual impact fee report and essentially approving the annual fiscal year 2324 annual impact fee report.
I move to approve.
First, second? Second by Supervisor Setello. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello? Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That would take us to item 2.4. Discuss and approval, the elimination of county facilities, information technology committee, homeless task force, home loan committee, landfill committee and other committees the board may desire to eliminate, amend the bylaws. And then amend the bylaws of the economic advisory committee to change the scope of the committee to solely work on tourism initiatives, reduce the membership to seven members and change the name of the economic advisory committee to tourism advisory committee and provide staff direction on that. So there's two things here. There's, you know, coming in as chair and vice chair. We discussed how can we really maximize our staff resources? There are some committees in my experience where you essentially have the same conversation at the committee level and then it comes to the board level. And there are a lot of background processes that a lot of the public doesn't know about with the clerk's office and other staff members that are involved that take quite a bit of time. You know, we tend to add committees every year and we haven't really taken that step back and analyzed, you know, which committees to potentially eliminate. Because if you keep adding committees to the foundation, then you're, essentially it's going to be unmanageable for the, for the county. These, we discussed just as, for discussion points to get the conversation started. Certainly willing to talk about if there are any pieces that we missed. And so again, facilities, you know, I've been on facilities. The thought with facilities is that those are big issues that certainly can be handled at the board level when staff has updates as far as whether it's the library or other matters that are happening. IT committee, again, I think that's one of the ones where it was just duplicative from the committee level to the board level. And then homeless task force, the scope of it had changed somewhat. I know in talking to HHS Director Belton, that, that the task force itself is, was, there was some overlap between the task force and then this working group that's working on the encampment issue. So, but the task force itself, you know, potentially doesn't need to have the whole committee process. If the working group still exists, that's particularly focused on encampments and some other issues that may be workable. Home loan committee, you know, again, I'd be certainly willing to listen to those who have served on that committee to see how necessary it may or may not be. And then landfill committee, the scope has really changed of that committee. And we now have an ad hoc that's focused on like basically exploring solutions that may be landfill or maybe transfer stations or other. So that was really sort of the gist there. And then with economic advisory, as I've discussed, you know, briefly last week, it's really trying to, there are a lot of economic development matters that we could explore as a community. It's really trying to just at least for this year to refine that focus, to try to ensure that we get some tangible initiatives and solutions moving forward was really the goal there. And I believe there's a consensus on this board focus on tourism. And that's something that we can all agree on. And so that's kind of, it's not to diminish the work of the economic development committee and everybody involved, but it's really just refine the focus so that we can really make an aggressive effort, a bold effort to have some initiatives move forward this year. And then also with that, reducing the membership from 11 members to seven members. Again, appreciate all the people that have served, but at the same time, we have to be reasonable about what is the sort of that sweet spot on a committee as far as having productive discussion. I've been on committees frankly, you know, where there, I'm just, where there are 15 to 20 members on them. And I've found that, and sometimes they're out of, you know, basically they're by law that those have to exist. I found that those have essentially been the least efficient productive committees. And it's, it's really hard to have 11 voices in a room, 10 voices, 11 voices in a room and really come to a consensus. So seven was really the thought to have, just to throw it out there, the two supervisors, the representatives from each of the cities. And then three instead of six members from local organizations. And certainly would be willing to talk about which organizations that would entail. But my thoughts would be Spirit of San Juan, AHPA, and perhaps Visit San Benito or any other organizations. So we're doing our best to cover. So that's the proposal. We'll, we'll come back for discussion and questions, but do we have public comment on that?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. I have no public comment.
Okay, bring it back to the board for questions and comments. I'll start with Supervisor Curro.
Okay, so when it comes to facilities, I completely agree. I think it should be at the board level. But I truly feel we need to, as a new board, I've never been on the facilities committee. I don't, I know just as a former county employee about facilities, but a comprehensive facilities update and what we could be looking at for a long-term solution, because we know we cannot solve our facilities problems overnight. So if that's something that the board would, would consider by the removal of that committee, but making it something that we kind of chomp at a little bit at a time. When it comes to IT, I agree, a committee for IT is very difficult, especially with the sensitivity of IT and software and technology. And we need to think about security in our county and our network. And so I believe, I think, in my opinion, I would make the recommendation that if, if the chair and vice chair have not already been fully abreast of any IT issues, that it would be a potentially a chair and vice chair ad hoc as needed. So IT has that support of being able to inform the board in a, in a private matter about security where you do not want to be making it public. That would be my only thing on the IT one. I do have concerns about where broadband falls right now. With the amount of money coming in from the federal government and broadband and how that broadband initiative is being moved forward. When I was on the IT committee, I really focused on the broadband side because it could bring in a lot of money. At the same time, it's a double edged sword. I'm not a huge broadband fan because I think we need communications in South County before we need internet in South County. But that's just my priority list. We can't always tell the federal government what we want when it comes to money. But we can try. So those are my concerns with those. And if, if that's a consideration that the chair and the board would look at. When it comes to the EAC, that Economic Advisory Committee, I completely support the tourism theme and focus. And it was kind of where the Economic Advisory Committee had been shifting was for tourism and working with the new nonprofit, Visit San Benito, and thanking the prior board for all their support in, in helping that move forward. My biggest concern is that workforce and business support, supporting our local businesses and promoting them. It, it ties into tourism and that tourism could be the, the main focus for this year on the EAC. But I really strongly support it being an EAC committee with the 2025 agenda being tourism and the priority of the board. and the priority of the board directive to that EAC. Um, but there's, there's pieces of tourism that you don't always take into consideration and that it is including workforce and businesses and how you tie those together. So those are my only comments and I'm, I'm really excited about the focus of the chair's, um, agenda with, with tourism. And I'm excited to see that move forward. Um, I, I, I still feel the, the, the structure of the EAC with the larger, um, amount gives it more diversity in, in conversation. Um, my only recommendation would be if, if, after attending a EAC meeting in 2025 and hearing directly from those members, then maybe considering the downsizing to an 11. Um, and I would support that if that's where, uh, the, the committee decides to go. But those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Professor Velazquez?
I'm, I'm okay with the recommendations here. I think it's important that we do streamline to get things done and move quickly. I also do think it's important that we do have some of the information, as you pointed out, of facilities committee. Not as a committee, but what is the information? I think a lot of what we need to do as a board is make sure we're 100% clear where we're at as a county. But at that point, we need to move and get things done. And I think streamlining, I know I've been on so many committees in the past that started off being very efficient and we'd get so much done and they would grow and grow. And before long, nothing was getting done at all. It doesn't mean we can't change things, uh, six months or a year if we see that we need the need. I think right now we need to move aggressively on streamlining to get things done. I'm excited about, uh, focus back on tourism. And many may, may know, may, some of you may not know, but when, um, the national park was, came in, we talked about renaming the highway to technical national park highway. And lo and behold, we just got a national park in our backyard and we had a fight about changing the name of a road. And, you know, if we're going to really push for tourism, we all have to work together to make these changes. The city did their part from San Felipe to, I believe it was, uh, Sunset or, I forgot what street it was. And then it just stopped from there. Um, we need to be working on it together and these are just small little examples of, of things that we can do together quickly. And I think again, as, as we move forward, we can make adjustments as needed. But I think the party should be, uh, changing some of these things that are there and going with the recommendations that are here today.
Thank you very much, Professor Zanger.
Um, yeah, I actually had a question, just to clarify, Supervisor Curro, the IT, we, the IT, we went through with the IT committee removal. Were you suggesting like a sort of standing ad hoc or what was your suggestion?
No, just to, just a, uh, maybe a, a short-term update, security, so that the chair and vice chair are informed of where any issues are. And if something is needed, then it could be brought back to the full board. Um, some of these things are closed session items versus public items. And I hope the public understands that's because of security measures. And that would be my only recommendation is just to make sure you guys are fully in the loop of what's happening there.
Yeah, well, I would, I would support that. And, and I, I would also support the general facilities update, um, at the board level. And then, um, as needed, facilities updates. Uh, beyond that, I'm with the recommendation.
Thank you, Supervisor Sotelo.
Thank you. Um, I agree with facilities and, um, I like Supervisor Curro's suggestion with the IT. Um, I think that's really good so that if there are, you know, security sensitive kind of things, we do have a method for how that's addressed. And I think the chair and vice chair is a perfect opportunity to do that. The home loan committee, I've never sat on that and I'm unsure as to what that committee even does. Has anybody sat on that?
I have.
You have?
Yeah, I think, um, we only had one or two meetings in the entire entirety of it. And, um, I could say during those meetings, the, the outcome was we had, you know, a small amount of money and we had to find something to do with it. And one of the suggestions was a kind of first time home buyers workshop at the epicenter. I think that's the only real thing that I've, that I've experienced that came out of it.
Okay. Has, has anyone spoke to, I, I'm looking on our website right now and the contact person is Enrique Areola. Is, I, I remember when I was chair and I remember kind of doing some of the same stuff. And I remember eliminating a committee and then it came back and it was like, you can't eliminate that. That is like, you have to have somebody on that. And so I'm okay eliminating it, but I don't really understand what they do. And I'm, I'm unclear, is it something that we have to have or is it something that we can get rid of? And, um, I apologize, I didn't reach out to Enrique and, and even ask him what it was about. So, um, not sure on that one. I don't have anything to, no two cents to give you there. Um, and then with the economic advisory committee, um, I, I would just, you know, again, you know, I agree with Supervisor Curro. I think that, um, I love the, um, the focus and I think that's really great. Um, but I would leave it as, you know, instead of changing the name of it, um, I would leave it as the economic advisory committee, but then going in with the focus, just, you know, whoever, you know, is on that committee, um, working with the committee members and, um, stating that, hey, this is the focus this year and, um, whatever. I just think there is, we've done some really great work with workforce development. And I think some things that'll be rolling out that, um, I think should be rolling out this month, I believe it is, um, on kind of workforce training, um, that I think is going to be incredibly beneficial to our entire community. Um, the businesses that are here, individuals, even our county, um, kind of county government, I think. Um, and so I would hate to see some of the work that has been done there. All of a sudden, the only focus is tourism. And even though I think tourism can be the main focus, I still think if we change the name, there is no place for workforce development. There is no place for the small businesses, small business support. Um, and so I guess I would just caution that, um, you know, those can be minor things and you could still have those people there, um, with tourism. It needs the support of workforce development. It needs the support of the small businesses. Um, I think we've done a really good job bringing people together. Um, we got more information out, people were working towards common goals. Um, you know, one of the other things that I think is, is important for the economic advisory committee, um, is working on the CEDs. The CEDs allows us to be able to leverage dollars from the federal and state government. And so, um, I wouldn't want to lose anything on that end, um, as well as there's the whole uplift central coast that's, um, happening right now. And I don't want to miss any opportunities for our county, again, potentially, um, bringing programs here or dollars here. Um, so I would just caution that, tho- those are just some of my concerns. Um, as far as 11 to seven, um, I would encourage you to meet with the committee and see kind of what that looks like, who that ends up being. Um, but I do think that, I, I agree, I think streamlining is incredibly important. I think working efficiently and smartly is, um, is going to be so important for us. Um, but I do feel like, you know, I, I know exactly what you're talking about because I felt a little bit like that when I first got on the economic development, uh, committee. Um, and we did a lot of work. We did, um, both Supervisor Curro and I both put our discretionary supervisor dollars towards a strategic, um, planner to come in and really, really work with us and all of the organizations, um, that are doing this workforce development, small business, tourism, and, um, kind of really tried to get, um, kind of a layout and a blueprint of kind of moving forward and, and really diving into the needs of this community. So I wholeheartedly support, um, the efforts and the focus on tourism. Um, but I'd be reluctant to support it, that being the only, um, the only focus, um, for, you know, years to come. And I, I feel like that's what it turns into if we change, um, if we change the name, we're essentially going to get rid of kind of everything. Um, but I absolutely respect the majority of this board. And so if that is the will, then, um, I will, you know, I will be supportive. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Satello. Um, appreciate all the questions and comments and the home loan committee is something I thought and consulted with Supervisor Zanger who had said on that. And, um, the takeaway was that it falls into that group of categories of committees where the, the substance can be dealt with at the board level. So if there are recommendations from, um, Enrique's office or whatnot, that those can come directly to us. So those, again, the board level, the thought with the board level, um, discussions, IT, facilities, homelessness. Um, because homelessness, again, we're certainly not taking our hands off homelessness. The, the goal is to have homelessness be at the top of the board level priorities so that it's a continuous, a continual matter that comes to us. So that also would sort of, um, negate the need for a committee because it's going to be at the board level so often and we can avoid those duplicative conversations. And at the same time, we have a staff working group that's working to enact the policies that we're putting forward here. Um, and there would be overlap essentially between that working group and the task force, uh, members who are staff members. It would just take supervisors out of that conversation. We're already in that conversation here at the board level. Um, and then landfill again, um, we have to, I think continually monitor that, see whether there's a need for a committee at some point, but right now I think Supervisor Zanger and Supervisor Curro are going to be coming back, um, with some recommendations and we can certainly go from there on that subject. When it comes to, um, um, economic development, I believe we would have to bring back and talking to the county council, we can give direction today. And then we would have to bring back a resolution, if I'm not mistaken, um, that would be changing because you'd be changing the bylaws. Essentially we're bringing back the bylaws to change the name of the committee, um, if there's a will, and then to reduce the membership and give further direction on how the reduction in membership will go forward. Um, so my recommendation as the person who brought this forward, um, again, would be to, um, eliminate the five committees discussed, um, and to bring back a resolution that would, uh, you know, and I do actually want to say a couple of things. We do still, I totally get the points from Supervisor Satello. We would still have organizations working on workforce development, small business development. Um, it just wouldn't be the county necessarily right in the middle of those conversations. And the goal here again, it's not to diminish the importance of those issues. It's just to make a real, um, bold attempt from my view to focus us on something, which is tourism, so that we can come away in this next year with some real tangible, um, policies and programs that are beneficial to the community so that the time of the people that are involved in these committees is, is maximized. That's really the goal. We can always, there's a will, go back to a broader subject matter on that committee. It's just really to try to come away in a relatively short time with some initiatives, um, that are tangible. And, um, and I know we've had, for instance, the hip camp, uh, item that came out of, um, economic development as an example of something we're looking for here going forward in the next year from my view. Um, so again, recommendation is to eliminate five committees, um, continually monitor. I think it should be something that comes back, maybe it's annual, each year when there's a chair and, and there's that discussion, but it should come back, whether it's annual or semi-annual, um, on the need for specific committees to maximize time. And then to bring back a resolution to change the bylaws, um, and whatever is necessary through resolution to, um, and, and to change the name to the tourism advisory committee, which really would send a message that we're focused on tourism. Um, and then to reduce the membership from 11 to seven members. As far as how that would occur, my initial, um, thought was to have the members, the groups themselves decide who would stay on. It would essentially be going from two to one within those, those groups. And they would, they could basically have it in, on their plate to decide who would stay on. That's the recommendation. Can I, um, and I'll put it forward as a motion since my idea, is there, is there, that's a first on my end? Is there a second?
I'll second your motion.
Further discussion, Supervisor Satello?
Would you be opposed to, um, separating it into two motions? Cause I really want to support, um, like the, the, um, eliminating the five committees, but I'm struggling with the economic advisory committee. So I don't want to be no to everything. I want to be supportive in that, but like I said, I'm, I'm struggling with the other one.
Totally appreciate that. Certainly willing. So I will withdraw my motion if that's okay with Supervisor Velazquez. And I'll make a new motion first to eliminate, um, the five committees that have stayed here. Is there a second?
Okay. And with that, if, if I may?
Yes.
With that, um, is there, we're going to formally then at this point say that we'd also like to bring back a recommendation to have a facilities updated at the board level for removing that committee? As Supervisor Curro was suggesting?
I'd certainly be open to that. And as chair and vice chair, we can, yes, I think instead of having a future agenda item, I think as part of this discussion, that makes sense to have, um, in the relatively near future enough. Okay. So that would, uh, be the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, uh, first and a second, uh, roll call vote please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanger?
Yes.
Supervisor Satello?
Supervisor Curro? Yes.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you. And then as a second motion would be to, um, bring back a resolution or whatever is necessary from a legal standpoint, um, to change the bylaws and to change the name of the economic development committee to the tourism advisory committee and to reduce the membership, um, from 11 to seven members and to, um, get advisement from the, uh, groups that are involved as to who would be on the committee going forward. That would be my motion.
I will second.
Do a first and a second, roll call vote please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zanger? Supervisor Satello?
Supervisor Curro? No.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Three, two vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That would take us to, uh, section three, finance corporation unless, uh, CAO, do we have any timeliness with closed session at this point?
Um, we do have consultants that are, uh, ready right now at 11:30. If you prefer to go to closed session first and then go back.
Board is okay, we'll adjourn to closed session and come back for finance, um, or, uh, the finance corporation and the future agenda items. See the consensus, um, so we'll move things around. Uh, we're going to move on to closed session. And that would bring us to, do we have public comment for closed session?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card on Zoom. Please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
No public comment. Do we need to announce anything else beforehand? We're okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned to, uh, closed session.
Do we do that in back room or do we?
Yeah. Oh.
Recording in progress.
We are back from closed session. Can we please have a report on a closed session?
Yes, Chairman. On 4.1, County created an ad hoc and direction was provided to staff, given was given to staff. On 4.2, direction was given to staff. On 4.3, information was provided and given to staff. And then 4.4, direction was given to staff.
Good. Play. Who wrote microphone, Dave?
4.5, the Board unanimously approved stipulation to consolidate case.
And can I ask for clarification on the 4.1 ad hoc? Because we're creating an ad hoc, is it okay to disclose? We have a name on there. Is it okay to disclose what the ad hoc, the general subject matter that the ad hoc was for?
Yes. It's an ad hoc for the-
Basically Fire Protection Services-
Fire Protection Services.
Finding a resolution with the City of Pauls.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's closed session. I'm gonna, just to not complicate things with Finance Corporation, which is a separate meeting, talking to County Council, I'm gonna move future agenda items next, and then after that, we'll adjourn and then go to the Finance Corporation meeting, unless there's objection from the Board, not seeing any. So we will now move to 5.1, which is future agenda items, discuss and approve future agenda item requests submitted by Board members and provide staff direction if desired. And so we have 10, we can go through these pretty quickly. I believe the practice is basically to give a brief description of what it is. This isn't a place to necessarily debate opposing cons, that would be at a later time. So we can just go through these quickly here. I've already discussed Board rules, basically, that we would bring back Board rules, proposed draft Board rules, with the goal of, you know, basically streamlining some things that just broadly, it would be Rosenberg's rules and with some amendments that we would, as the governance ad hoc that we'll bring forward, and we will strive to get that draft to the Board as soon as possible. So there's plenty of time, and obviously to the public when the agenda is posted on the Wednesday before, there's plenty of time to digest that and for discussion. Is there consensus on, that one's mine, is there consensus on Board rules coming back? Seeing head nods, yes, yes. So that one is a yes. Mid-year budget review, the idea was we have a new supervisor. I think it's probably a good practice personally to have a mid-year budget review either way, as a regular practice, just to bring that back and see where we're at financially, and if any adjustments are desired by the Board. Is that okay? Seeing ahead, nod, yes. Committee terms, I brought that forward. Obviously, you know, we had this discussion last year, there was some disagreement, but I wanted to revisit committee terms and just, you know, with the idea that they are non-binding already, to see if we can just take that out of the bylaws, that there's no consensus. Okay. Yes. And then general plan overview, again, sort of along the same lines of the budget review, just having a new supervisor, but just going into the general plan and seeing, we have four a year, so just seeing if it's worth going piece by piece and seeing if there's a desire, certain things we might want to adjust at this point, as one of the-
Supervisor Curro?
Can we add into that a conversation about zoning, about the zoning with that general plan? Because I think, I think there's, there's some areas of inconsistencies, and I'd like to add that to that.
Yes, that sounds great. I'm not seeing any dissent there. And then San Luis reservoir, just having the discussion, what it would take to reopen it, if feasible. We understand there's a base of zebra mussels that have been there. It's been closed for almost 17 years, and we've had a loud cry from the public about, what are you guys doing? Why can't we do something with this? So just taking another look at that as a board and seeing what's feasible there. Supervisor Curro?
I really dove into this personally, just making sure that we include in that item when it comes back, the federal liability versus it being borne on the county as a liability, if there is any spreading of the zebra mussels to any other bodies of water, if that could be included in it.
Yes, and I think that would definitely inherently be involved, but we can make sure that that's stipulated on the record to be involved. I will also just clarify that the proposal is to explore non-water uses. I know there were still concerns about that as well, but explicitly, the proposal is to look at non-water recreation while we push the feds and other agencies to move ahead as expediently as possible on the removal of the zebra muscle. Some reason it has- Go ahead, Supervisor.
I would leave the whole conversation, even use of the water area, because this is again, a conversation that, how many years ago did we start this? It'd be solved in a few years. The minute we let it go again, nothing happens. But we're gonna have to push hard. So our, our community is paying taxes for this whole body, this whole San Huso, and we're not getting anything out of it, and quite frankly, we never will, unless we push hard all the way through.
I'm okay with having that as part of the discussion, and obviously discussion, gonna leave that somewhere. So, point. Not seeing any objection there.
I will, I will say it says San Luis on the agenda, San Huso.
San Huso, yes, sorry. That may have been my, that might have been my mistake. We don't have any say on San Luis. Anyhow, Board priorities, this was just to just get on the same page, and I've always stated it's, you know, we have limited staff members to try to find three to five things, whatever that number might be, so that staff is aware, we're all aware, these is a board, these are our priorities for the next year.
So, at a reg-
We have-
Sorry, at a board retreat or at a regular board meeting?
At the regular board meeting, and to try to get it done, just, the goal is to not have it be like a day-long conversation, that it's more of topics, that these are, okay, can we agree on this topic? Can we agree on that topic? The border treat itself, it's all due with Vice Chair Zanger, and we've decided to advise staff for this year to cancel that, and that we're all adults and we think we can all work together. We don't need somebody to, you know, because the border treat has really in the past been facilitator on relationship building and all those things. It's my goal is sure that we don't need to have those issues that we, we're all gonna, I'm gonna make sure we all work together well, one way or another. So I think staff time, saving some money on a facilitator, having all our department heads there, I'd like to give it a shot for a year to see if we can go without the day-long retreat. And then, real quick, we thought maybe using that date, we have a special meeting that we couldn't do on the 21st. We have that open date already, moving the discussion of COO recruitment to the 21st, and, and there was one other matter that we were gonna address.
Assessment appeals.
Thank you, assessment appeal. Just so we're, again, so we're not doing standalone assessment appeals, we're doing it all in one, just trying to be as-
Set on the 4th?
That'll be February 4th.
I was just, go ahead, Mr. Chair, that from what I've heard today, I hear a board that is willing to work together on these things, and I see everyone has a sense of priority to get things done. One thing I've said in the past to different boards is, if we could just focus on five things, or maybe seven, after four years, that's 20 items that we never get accomplished, because we're so busy trying to do everything, and we end up with nothing. So I'm happy, from what I've heard today, I'm looking forward to staying focused.
Fantastic, thank you for that.
And I know the staff will love that, too.
Yes, thank you. So those are all mine, it seems, there's no objection there, and we move on to Supervisor Zanger.
Yeah, the 150 logo, so the 150 logo was, was designed at the time with the intention or potential to remove the 150 ribbon off the bottom and have a brand-new logo, and we sort of tabled that discussion, because we weren't ready to do that, and so I just want to bring it back and have staff present what it would be like to adopt the new logo, and maybe the cost associated with that and what we would do, so.
Totally support.
Great. Next is the affordable housing ordinance. Take another look at it. I think there's some things in there personally that I want to look at adjusting, so basically just bringing that back and looking at tweaking pieces of the ordinance. Okay. Next is the planning resubmital situation. So right now, there's no policy that requires a, basically a cool-off period after a project is denied. So if a project is denied, they can come back the next day and try again, and there's no period in which they must hold off on that. And so I'd be suggesting something, we discussed it, but something like a year or two, cool-off period before projects can continue to resubmit over and over, definitely. Next would just be roads, looking at another road package as far as hitting some more of our roads, looking at, I guess, what priorities would be and how we would potentially finance something like that. And this would be separate from everything that we currently have scheduled, it would be sort of a new thing with, with new roads, new funding, not re-looking at what we're already doing, be new roads.
Vice Chair Zanger?
Chair.
Yeah, on that one, could we include, there was a presentation some years back, and I think Supervisor Cosmickey was on the board at the time, and it was about bonding and bonding capacity. If we could tie that, because that was an incredible opportunity that unfortunately, due to the economy, we missed our window.
And waiting too long.
And waiting too long, but if we could catch that window again, I think we could do amazing things. So I really do support that, if we could tie that in with-
Absolutely, yeah, that way we're, we have the discussions, so we're ready when we have the opportunity. Yeah, that's part of it, yeah, bonding discussion is part of it, absolutely.
And if the COO's office can look back at prior records of that discussion, and I know there was some consulting with a firm at the time, that came back and gave a presentation about what it would, interest rates and the overall costs and-
We certainly can do that.
Okay.
Chair, if I could just add, if we could, as far as the road package, also, we, we could talk about the ones that are in line now, because there might be ways to beat those up quite a bit. We get this package, there's a lot of these roads done by the summer.
Yeah, well, I, I think we'll probably have some agenda items coming with what's currently being worked on.
We're gonna have an extensive road package update, and I think that would be a good time to delve into what you're discussing. So that's only, that would just be two weeks off.
I'm a little afraid of delays and-
Yep.
Absolutely.
Small window.
That's it.
Those are all of them. Do we have public comment?
If you'd like to make a, in chambers, Melinda. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you very much. That would bring us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of the Board? A second?
I'll second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned. That would mean we will open the Finance Corporation meeting for the Board, adjourned as the Board of Supervisors, and reconvene as the Board of Directors of the Samyel County Financial Corporation. First part is acknowledgment of certificate of posting. Do we have a motion to approve? In a second?
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then public comment, opportunity to address the Board on items of interest not on the agenda.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment. Oh, just a second. Jackie, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and Board of Supervisors. This is Jackie Morris Lopez, District Two, resident of San Juan Batista. I'm wondering if you would entertain or consider, strongly consider doing a resolution publicly to consider our county as a county of, of being cognizant of the current immigration sweeps. At loss of the word for the title here.
Jackie, this is, this is the Chair, that it's, this is the Finance Corporation- Jackie, this is, this is the Chair, this is the Finance Corporation meeting. So that wouldn't fall under jurisdiction of the-
I'm so sorry, Chair. So sorry.
But if you'd like to email the Board, I would just encourage you to email the Board and with your feedback. Thank you very much, because we're past regular public comment.
All right, thank you for your time, bye-bye.
Any other public comment?
No further public comment.
Thank you very much. So that would bring us to consent agenda, which is approve the action minutes of the January 24th, 2023 annual meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? First and a second?
Okay, sounds good.
A second? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. And that would bring us to the regular agenda, appointment of officers for the year 2025, President, Vice President, and Secretary Treasurer. Do I have a motion?
So can I make a motion for Supervisor Cosmic to be the President, Supervisor Zanger to be the Vice President, and Melinda Casillas to be the Secretary Treasurer?
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 5-0. That would take us to the end of Finance Corporation and we are done with business for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do we need a motion to adjourn? We don't, I think that's just more symbolic. Yeah. We're adjourned, thank you.